Say that.
I knew him from the time I was like six years old for his first election.
Miss him, the best.
It was my first political autograph.
Oh, so he's responsible, alright.
Yeah.
Um, so I will, I should not unless unless Dan doesn't want to honor the spirit of his mentor, you know, I won't keep you long. I can't speak for anybody else. Um, but thi- this is a minor change to the existing shul at sixteen Murray. Um, we are adding on um to the congregants do not need to uh travel out of the neighborhood to use a ritual bath, which is obviously commonly viewed as a uh a normal law and accepted part of the routine. Um, uh, elements you would see in an Orthodox house of worship. Um, there are some minor modifications um that are required by that, um, but nothing consequential. Uh, the board had previously um adopted a negative declaration that then there wouldn't be any significant impact. So the zoning board um granted the relief that we requested um without controversy. And we are here to have the uh site plan confirmed um by you. I had the opportunity to review the review memorandum. Um, nothing uh there struck me. Um, as as being troublesome from a from a policy perspective. And if there are any uh technical issues um that need to be addressed in terms of the submission. Uh, I know that Ms. Burrice would uh be able to accommodate and 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 address those. Um, we appreciate the opportunity that we've had to continue to serve the people of Armont and the cooperation that we've had from uh all the boards uh in continuing to serve um our constituency. Uh, and we certainly um look forward to hopefully having a favorable outcome tonight that will permit us to continue to do that for the foreseeable future.
Thank you.
Um, everyone will see that the applicant did go to the A R C last uh during between the two meetings. And the memo was in your packet it that the architectural review board had no issue with this application. And the moment was in there. Um. I don't know if there's any engineering comments, Al.
No, we've uh we've reviewed it and uh looked at the review changes that were made and we find them acceptable. Uh, we've got to all the middles and we've, like I said, reviewed same and we're comfortable at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there was a village planner memo in there from Valerie Manostra dated June twentieth. And she had no issues either. The only thing she hadn't had at the moment was the architectural review board, which she received after her memo. But I believe everything from a planning perspective is on part is 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 fine. And she said the application is ready for approval. There were two memos we received after the fact um from the last meeting, which were no issues. Um, a letter from Rockland County Health dated May tenth. Uh, they just asked uh if if a well is going to be proposed to show it on the plan. Um, and an application for R C D O H for review of the stormwater for mosquito code from Liz Mello and Rockland County Sore dated April fourteenth. Um, it's requiring the impact fee and um their standard comments. And that's it. There's no G M L required for this to review or or go over.
Um, well, we never got one.
There is no G M L required.
Right, I was about and I was about to say, and the uh mapper shows that it's not uh subject to a G M L.
I regret the county didn't think it had the right to send one anyway, because you know, they can uh fortunately, they've been restrained so far.
Lou, did you have any comments?
I uh I didn't have any more comments, but I did have a question for the applicant. Does the applicant own any other properties in the close vicinity to this to this address?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Is there something we should be aware of?
Uh, I was told to today that the applicant owns the lot next door. And if the parking was going to be an issue, they could have had the availability to put parking on the lot next door.
Well, why wouldn't that have come up at the Z B A?
How would we know?
Yeah, I don't know of that. Um.
I I don't know of that. And I I mean, where where the where was this? Uh, where was this? I mean, uh, what's the source of the information? We'd be happy to look into it.
Right, I'm just asking a question because I know the parking was a big hang up for everybody. So if there was available parking close by, I thought it'll be a good idea.
Um, I I don't know. I don't know about any other property that's owned by them.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know either. And our survey didn't identify them at that time, but we have it listed as now or formally. So it can, I mean, obviously it could have changed, but not I don't know of any.
Thank you.
Besides the issue, besides the amended site plan, there was an issue with the parking, right? You're still requesting the parking waiver?
I I don't believe there was an issue with the parking. Um, no, I'm not uh. It's been a it's been a relatively, there haven't really been many very uh many issues, Mr. Chairman, thankfully. Um, so I'm I'm not sure what the uh, you know, given that would be, we were adding to the um to the M K V.
We are requesting a parking waiver.
Yeah, if you if you look at the village planners memo on page two, parking fifteen parking spaces are required and the applicant is proposing twelve parking spots. The applicant is requesting a parking waiver from the planning board for a twenty percent reduction in parking.
The uh M K V, the M K V, as I think we had noted in our other presentations is is to serve the existing, you know, membership of the congregation. Um, the uh, the worship space, um, you know, itself um is uh is not impacted by the instance application. Um, and that's really the barometer of the number of congregants. The addition of the M K V is not to serve additional, uh, not to serve additional people. And both the zoning board and this board in its review of the negative declaration um found merit in our view um that providing um this uh the M K V at this site rather than having congregants traversing um to another location was actually a more efficient and responsible way of providing a a M K V. Um, and um, you know, that folks who would be coming to the synagogue that would be using M K V at the synagogue, the M K V in and of itself is not what is uh is having the impact on the number of people who are attending um services. So that was remaining a constant. Um, and that was uh, that was the basis for uh for our request.
And I just want to acknowledge that the original site plan approval um a waiver was granted for eighteen point two percent reduction in parking. So it's not as significant of a waiver as it may sound because it's only going from the eighteen point two to the twenty percent. It's only that small difference. The original waiver was already granted.
If I remember correctly, at the previous um meeting, um, we we said that we'll be able to wave it, I think. We had discussed the issue with the parking. I think everybody was comfortable on the board.
Anybody have any questions? Nobody?
No.
We did go through it. Yeah, we went through it to some length last time, I think.
Yes.
Okay, should we open up to the public? Anybody have any objection to that?
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
If anyone would like to uh speak, please raise your hand and I'll call on you and unmute you.
I would just say if you are raising your hand and we you don't call you, it's possible that we can't see the raised hand. If you turn on your video and wave, then sometimes they'll catch you.
We have five or six people on the phone.
Um, oh, I see. That's what those are.
So they can't, they can't um raise their hand. Uh, I'll unmute them and see if they want to speak, if you'd like, Chairman.
Yeah, maybe one at a time.
That's what I plan on doing, one at a time.
Yeah, it looks like someone has his hand raised, Ingrid Benjamin.
Oh, okay. Um, I don't see that one.
How about I unmute myself?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, it's Andy Benjamin. I'm using my wife's computer. I'm just curious, uh, you know, again with traffic, uh.
All right, can you just give your address, please?
Twenty seven Fella Court. So it's it's another neighborhood down because what I'm seeing now, and I don't know whether this is more of new business or what, where we're getting crushed with school buses. And I just want to take the board because I see some of yous are new. Back to when my children were little, school buses were not even the small ones were not even allowed into the neighborhood, much less the large ones which are coming into the cul-de-sac. In New York City, for a long bus, school bus to reverse is against the law. They're reversing. They're going full speed ahead backwards in a long bus. And I counted as many five school buses coming into my neighborhood on, uh, I think it was Thursday. It's out of control. It's completely out of control. I actually went after one of the school buses, five forty-five, and went to a yeshiva and it went from from our little place in in Armont to a yeshiva in Muncie. The guy driving recklessly the whole way, I went into the school and I made a complaint. I don't think they cared because I'm not part of the Hasidic community. I'm Jewish, but not part of that community, so they didn't care. But the bus situation, a school bus situation is out of control now. And I see when there's more building, there's a M K V which is going to bring people from other synagogues, other areas. It it's out of control now, and I don't think the Armont Board is taking it serious. I don't even know why the cops aren't in the neighborhood enforcing these a full-size school bus going full speed ahead and reverse is mind-boggling, and it's against the law in New York City. What's anybody doing about it? Crickets.
Thank you. I don't know if that's an issue for our board, but I would suggest, recommend that you do call the police if this happens. I would just take down the license plate number and call the cops right away.
This is definitely an enforcement issue.
Yeah. Keep calling them with license numbers. It's bound to stop, or at least uh.
Yeah, it's not gonna stop because one of my neighbors called the police for a a big get-together they had, you know, this was a parking issue. Remember, we had, I think it was during last summer about the new rules with the parking. They called the Ramapo Police. By the time they got there, everything was calmed down. But the owner went to my neighbor on Phillips Court and said, you're a minority now, even though she's Jewish. You're a minority now and we're in control. And that's kind of what I see now. We're we're losing on our whole community. And it's ridiculous. Now, you're going to build a M K V. I haven't seen the plans. And you're saying because they want to be able to have a M K V within their own shul. What does that mean? People aren't going to be coming from all over to use that M K V? Has that question been asked?
It's it's only for the congregants of that shul.
How do you know that? So they're going to turn somebody away?
Not investigators.
Are they going to turn another Jewish person away that comes from somewhere else that wants to use the M K V?
You're welcome to stop by anytime.
That's what I'm saying. That's my point.
Come, I'm sure.
No, no, that's my point with people who are going to be coming from a lot of different areas. And again, it's going to be a traffic issue.
Okay, Mr. Thank you. Thank you for the comment. I'd like to, sorry, I'd like to just, uh, you know, cut out the back and forth.
The comments are limited to three minutes.
Okay, you heard me. That's all there is to. I don't think any change will happen, but I had to say it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next person that would like to speak is Heim Friedman.
Turn my video off.
Mr. Friedman, are you on?
Yes, I am. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm trying to.
Say your name and address.
I'm Friedman, ten Farmer Lane, Armont, New York.
Thanks.
So I attended the past few meetings and we spoke about parking. We approved it. What happened today that parking is again on the agenda?
I think there's, I think what they're doing is seeking final approval, so they're going through all the points, sir.
Oh, I got it.
And they do need a parking waiver, so it is, we'll we'll come up at tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to just unmute the few people that are on the phone to see if they want to say anything. Um, number ending in five, one, seven, five, if you'd like to s- to say anything, I'm trying to unmute you. Um, nothing.
Do we know how the people who are calling in can unmute themselves if they're muted?
Uh, well, I don't know if they know how to, but I can press unmute, but I'm asking them to unmute.
Right, I wonder if they know how.
Um, I don't know.
Does anybody know how you unmute yourself on a phone?
It's just showing as muted.
Yeah, okay.
Um, hold on. I have two people trying to get in. Okay, I'm also going to try a phone number ending in oh, five, four, two. If you'd like to speak, I'm trying to unmute you. Okay, phone number uh two, four, three, three.
Hello?
Hi, would you like to speak? Yes.
My name is Jacob Rosenberg and I live on Kings Court.
What number, sir?
I would, number nine, Kings Court.
Thank you.
I would like to note that this M K V is very important for the neighborhood. And all the neighbors that I know are very much looking forward for it to be approved. And we are not concerned about any traffic issues. We, as far as the neighbors see it, it's just going to add a lot of value to the neighborhood. And we don't see any, we don't participate any potential traffic issues.
Thank you. Um. I'll try. Is anyone that ends in eight, eight, four, three, if you'd like to speak, I'm trying to unmute you. And four, seven, nine, four. I don't see anybody. Um. Again, anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand or if you're on the phone, try to unmute yourself. I don't see anyone else, Chairman. You're muted, you had a.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's it. Anybody else? Last call?
I don't see. Yes.
Uh, just for the record, we haven't received any correspondence uh from any um interested or involved uh agency, municipality, et cetera, since the zoning board meeting.
No, I read them into the record earlier, the the Rockland County Sore and the Rockland County, um.
Rockland County?
Health were the only two two memos. I just read it them into the record.
That wasn't part of the Z B A?
No, that, no, those came for planning board because they were, there was in between. No.
Okay, because they both uh wrote letters um to the Z B A as well.
Yeah, because I send I send them the Z B A and I send them the planning board plans.
Right.
Okay.
They still have to, they still have to go to the Z B A or the?
No, no, they went to the Z B A and received their their uh for developmental coverage.
Good, thanks.
And they went to the A R C. They're here for a final.
Yes, the A R C memo is in the packet and the uh, the Z B A is noted on the plans in the um revised section where they added the developmental coverage from the bulk table. It's noted on the on the cover page of the plan, if you didn't see it.
Okay. So we're closing out the public hearing now and.
I don't see anyone else that that's raising their hand to speak at the public hearing.
Right.
Well, before you close it, are we looking or proving everything tonight?
Hello, do you hear me?
Oh, yes. Can you speak? Say your name and and address for the record, please?
I am Levy, Seven Murray Drive. I just wanted to say, the gentleman mentioned before about other congregants, other people coming to use the the bath from different areas. It that 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 was definitely not happening. And there's there's baths in in every shul and every congregation has their own, their own baths. There's no reason for anybody from elsewhere to come to use this one. The the congregation is mainly, I would say ninety-nine point nine, even a hundred percent for the immediate neighborhood. As was mentioned at the previous meeting, that there'll be less cars because right now we we have to drive to use the use the bath and then we have to come back to the neighborhood to go to the shul. If the shul will have a a bath of its own, there'll be less traffic. I I don't understand why somebody would, from a different neighborhood, come here to use to use the bath. That doesn't make any sense.
My recollection is that um at the zoning board testimony to that effect was uh um provided by uh um interested uh parties uh at that public hearing exactly to that.
Yes.
Yeah, it was in the uh, it was in our packet, the zoning board narrative.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
So hopefully that at least partially responds to the gentleman um who was concerned about uh increased traffic um by uh non-congregants utilizing uh this proposed M K V.
So Suzanne, nobody else, huh?
No, I don't see anyone else. If you wanted to close it, I would need a motion, but that's.
If we were inclined to approve, Dan, do we need uh, do we need to approve the parking waiver separately or is that part of the site plan?
Um, it would be separate.
Okay. So it's just two things. No special permit here. They they got that already.
Uh, Lou? Who they've got? There was no special permit required, was it?
Back, way back when, right? When they got there.
No, they already have one.
Yeah, the residential house of worship.
They were approved years ago.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm I'm talking about for this M K V.
Right.
Oh, no, no, there's no special. I don't believe there's a special permit required.
No.
It's a subordinate use.
Okay. So I'm ready to close the meeting if there's no objection. Anybody else have anything to say before we do that?
No, I was just going to ask, is that a motion?
I was just going to say, is that a motion to close?
It wasn't. Was any objections, but uh, yeah, I'll make the motion to close them. Close the public.
One second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
John, can you verbalize your response? Um.
He's frozen again.
He has an issue with his internet. His computer keeps on freezing.
Yes.
With his head, no.
Well, we could hear.
I I haven't.
No.
Thank God our lives don't depend on technology.
My living does.
Well, right now.
He's gone.
Yeah, we I I didn't hear um a verbal vote and open. Uh, John, did you vote in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
So it's five? Everybody?
Right.
Okay, so I make the motion to approve the uh, the parking waiver. How how detailed do we have to get? The twenty percent parking waiver down from fifteen to twelve, which they have provided?
Yes, but uh, how about someone give uh uh, a basis for granting the waiver?
Okay, is that a requirement when we uh do the waivers? Just a good idea?
I I just think it's good practice.
Okay. Okay, so should it be me as I made the motion?
That would be fine.
Okay.
I mean, an example of something that uh uh, the board might find pertinent is uh representations that uh um, the uh people that will be using the M K V are the same people who already attend um the uh congregation. Um, and that um I'm trying to remember what the exact testimony was, but uh, uh, it was something to the effect of it prevents them from having to come uh, stay there.
So they don't have to.
And then leave and come back.
I think the idea was that anyone who lives in close proximity to the shul now has to drive a distance to another M K V. And then, once he's driving, he's going to drive to shul and park at the shul. This way, he could just walk to the shul because he lives a few houses away, use the M K V on the shul, and he never brought his car. I think that was the rationale. If I'm right, the applicant could probably uh speak to that better.
Correct, and technically parking till now was never an issue.
Right, and if anything, we're saying.
It's like a little addition to the to the place, so.
Right, the argument is it's all the same people, and if anything, the parking should be should be lessened as opposed to uh.
Correct.
That was the idea.
Okay, so we have.
Taking that, taking that all that into account, I would make the motion to uh approve the parking waiver.
I'll second.
On the basis uh provided by uh the chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Loud and clear, John.
Not opposed? Okay, so the motion carries five to zero on the.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
We still have one more thing to cover here.
We have to do.
I still appreciate it.
Okay. We now make the motion to uh to approve the amended site plan for the accessory M K V.
Uh, let's get a last uh prepared by um Civil Tech Engineering, last dated, Rachel, help me out here. Um, looks like June eighth.
She's muted.
Sorry, I was trying to find my unmute. Um, yes, June eighth.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yes, twenty twenty-two, sorry.
And it would be subject to uh compliance with uh any and all conditions um of the review letters from uh Rockland County Sewer Department. Um, Rockland Pa- County Department of Health. Um, the comment letter from Nelson Pope and Voorhees uh dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the comments from.
And June twentieth.
Excuse me?
And June twentieth. They did a second.
Okay. Um. Uh, comments from Rockland County, uh, Ramapo D P W did March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Was there a second letter for that too?
No, only one letter.
Okay, uh, comments of the Tolman Fire Department dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Any follow-ups there? Okay, comments from Fusco Engineering uh dated March ninth, twenty twenty-two. Any uh further uh comments after that uh memo? No. Um. The uh submission of uh assigned original uh stormwater management agreement uh and. And if required, security and a review by the village engineer with regard to schedule A and the maintenance, the specific maintenance that has to be carried out by the applicant. Compliance with well, payment of any outstanding professional fees. And whatever other standard comments we apply to site plans.
So that's the motion, did we have a second?
I was just going to ask that, no, I don't have a second. I know, I do have a second.
Mordecai.
Mordecai. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Motion carries five to zero.
Now Mr. Carver can thank us.
Thank you, I'll thank you instead.
Okay, thank you for coming.
And all I can say for new businesses, we will have three applications for the July meeting. I don't know if we'll have this via Zoom or in person. I don't know if there'll be another extension. Dan, I don't know if you have any idea on that.
So far, Dan, Dan was right with the Zoom.
Yeah.
Keep it up, lady.
It, I'm. I'm not, I don't think I'm going out on a limb to assume that further extensions will be granted.
Well, as soon as I hear, I will let everyone know. All three applications for the July meeting are all religious applications. So one is the continuance of the one that we just had tonight.
Skill Building Center.
Skill Building, there's another residential house of worship and another, another school. So all of that.
These two are new ones?
Yeah, new, two new ones, yes. One's a house of worship and one is a school. And that's, I don't have anything else. I just need a motion to end the meeting.
I'll make the motion to end the meeting.
Not end the meeting, a motion.
To adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting.
Excuse me.
We got you.
I'm sorry, who made that motion?
The chairman, but I did it wrong, so I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
And who seconded it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening and Dan, your anniversary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good anniversary, okay.
Okay, bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye Suzanne, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.